One, it's time to start our city council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read the role?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs, Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder, Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, the players this evening will be led by Councilwoman Belinda Creighton Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Uh, the consent, uh, public hearing item number two. The award a bid is to Plum Tech Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $236,950. And the minutes of the November 6th, 2023 as proposed.
Check it.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Is there anyone joining me for the small business? Did we already do this?
Uh, no, you've not done it yet.
Is there anyone joining me for it? Two, three, six, nine, five, sir. Good, good. A City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the City of Waterloo celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas local businesses are the city's economic engines that make up an essential part of the economic health of the city of Waterloo and contributes to a vibrant and active downtown. And whereas businesses of 500 employees or fewer make up 99.9% of all U.S. businesses. And whereas studies have found for every dollar spent at a local business, 67 cents is reinvested locally. And whereas supporting a local business secures jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. Small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas local businesses help create a strong local economy, provide unique products and services to residents and businesses, foster community connection in gathering spaces, and provide employment and leadership opportunities. And whereas the City of Waterloo wants to recognize the contributions of local businesses to the Waterloo community. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023 as Small Business Saturday. And Jessica, our executive director for Main Street, please talk to us about our proclamation.
Well, my focus is on downtown Waterloo. There are so many small business owners and they are the heart of our community. And, um, Small Business Saturday is a national initiative to remind everyone to support local and shop small this holiday season. And so I would just like to remind you guys all to shop local this holiday season, dine local, and do it all year long because these are the people that we're reaching out to asking for donations and volunteers and sponsorships to all of our events. And, um, as the proclamation states, the majority of the money will stay right here in our community compared to, um, what happens when we spend those dollars in a big box store. So, support local.
And Jessica, thank you so much for all of your efforts as well. Um, I think I just heard a statistic that about 80-plus percent of some of our local, um, offices and spaces are filled with some type of business or some type of activity happening. So, we want to compliment you, we want to compliment Main Street, and we want to, uh, compliment the hundreds of small businesses within our local community that are out there every day being the backbones for our success. So, thank you for all your efforts in that care. Thank you. All right, it's now time for public comments. Your, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related ideas. State your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street. I was here on November 6th meeting, uh, giving my concerns on ongoing corruption that has not stopped. And I was taking you through a small timetable. I want to go back to the MHO 13-2-8-8 case, which was when I was redlined, when I went to then Public Safety Director Dan Trackle. And I had a meeting with him and Buck Clark in the mayor's office downstairs. I thought the meeting went fine when I left there and I had informed, uh, Dan Trackle about case 9914612, which I called a rape and kidnapping, when in fact, I didn't get it all out because it was more sinister. During this, at the Irmandale High School, a person stuck his finger in my daughter's vagina. Like I said, there was also a message.
Can we just ask not to be so graphic, please?
I won't.
I'm just asking you.
I said I won't. I'm past that now, bro. Believe me, I'm for you. Here, would you get us to him? Because I want you to know that this went way before you.
Right.
And if you look at the dates on this, this was told to the police chief back then. So, when this happened to my daughter, there was also a message surrounding the other two papers that I gave you. Tell your daddy he no longer has a half a million dollars, and if you tell your mother, we will kill her. What that was concerning was the first paper that I gave you, Mr. Hart says John Deere Life Insurance Company, and it shows Jacksonville, Illinois. This page right here, if you would. Okay, now, that's showing the existence of the policy and saying not to let my father exceed 250,000. If you look at this page right here, this is where I highlighted in blue. It shows you a date on it, which is 1/17/94, and that was Mercantile Bank, St. Louis, Missouri. On the other side, you'll see a, uh, Northwest Bank stamp, Waterloo, Iowa. The 1/17 is what's troubling because it's for the exact amount of my father's funeral a month before he died. A month before he died, they knew the price of his funeral, when in fact, it was the morning of the funeral that I ordered a limousine because I noticed there wasn't enough room for a very dear friend of his, Mary Terrell, who lived next door to us. So, I ordered an extra limousine that morning. There's no way they could have known the exact amount. This is the information that I gave to the police chief at the time, and Hurley was the mayor. And what I'm saying is benign neglect and not looking over it. I wasn't able to tell them that they hacked it. The people I said who were people of interest, which was the judge up here that I met out, not out, in the judge, at his house, or his sister's house, outside. I didn't know that because I could not get the police report. It took me seven years to get that. I'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you. All right. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Dave Grimm, 3560 West Donald Street. I'm the chair of the Operations Committee of the Waterloo Veterans Memorial Hall Commission. This afternoon, we have three individuals authorized to speak on behalf of the commission, and we have the chair of the commission here also. We're located in 1915 Corbett Court between West Fourth and West Fifth Streets. Our facility is utilized by various military organizations, as well as a meeting place for civic functions, memorial services, parades, and ceremonies. We currently have a parking problem and have had for years. We have three authorized parking spots on the south side of the street and no handicap parking. When we have function to the hall, everyone parks on the south side of the street illegally, with the understanding the city will not ticket the attendees. There's also a parking ramp on the south side of the street, but the city has blocked the walk-through access because of vandals and skateboarders. Right above that access is a city security camera. If an attendee utilizes the parking ramp, they have to walk through the building, around the building, and back down to us. Now imagine you have a walker or wheelchair, it's inclement weather or winter, uh, rather than walk through that ramp, through the access, 50 feet into our building, you're now walking at least half a block or longer to get into our facility. It's not good. We'd like to see the ramp access reopened. We'd also like to explore the possibility of using a voucher or a token system for individuals using the ramp, just like what IWC does for its vendors when they go down to, or people that use their, their city. Lastly, we'd like to help with the parking and traffic flow. We'd like to make Corbett Court a one-way street from West Fourth to West Fifth. Remove the curbing and the grassing areas and install pavement to match what is currently along half of that block. We've been working with the city for several months on this project. They've done a traffic study, but as of yet, no action has been taken. We'd like the city to include this in the Veterans Way Project. On behalf of the commission, we thank you for your support and understanding. And God bless America.
Thank you.
My name is James Lentfer. Uh, my address is 810 Creston Avenue, Waterloo, and I'm a commissioner of Veterans Memorial Hall. I'm here today to bring to the city our concerns about the west-side parking ramp. Veterans Memorial Commission has no control or say over what the back of the ramp looks like or how it is kept up. However, the messy grass area and the dumpsters are eyesores to us and our visitors. Recently, our access to the ramp was blocked due to skateboarders. We need a doorway back, maybe one we can control and lock when our events are finished. We have no handicap parking, even though our building has been renovated for handicap accessibility. Why can't the city move the dumpster 35 feet and concrete the grassy area next for, next to it for handicap parking? Also, please considering reopening a doorway from the ramp to Veterans Memorial Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Miller. I reside at 4408 Reflection Lane, 50701 zip code. I've been, my honor and privilege to serve on the Waterloo Veterans Memorial Hall Commission for, since 1997. And during those times, I've learned a lot about Memorial Hall and its history. And one of the things that, uh, I remember is back in 1964, I was just a sophomore in high school. They were going to graze because of urban renewal, take the building down. Fortunately, there were some concerned citizens, veterans, that spoke up, did some proactive measures, and put it on the historical archives, registry sites, whatever you want to call it, and, um, it preserved that landmark building. Well, they were going to take the building down because they were going to make a big parking lot there. Well, once the building was saved, what is put right out the face of us is a parking ramp. That's unfortunate for the, for the hall. You know, it's just a shame that it took the parking away that existed before, and then they were left for nothing. So, as Jim and Dave alluded to, you know, just doing some measures. I know I've spoke with the mayor, he's been working with us, uh, with Mohammed. They've been doing some things to try and get this resolved, and hopefully through next spring, um, some other ears are upon it, so you get eyeballs to what's going on over there. Uh, and it's a shame, you know, it was just two years ago that we got legal spark, parking spots there. Uh, there was only three of them then, and then, like they said, no handicap. So, if we can get some sort of action on the south side, get rid of all that grassy lanes over there, I'm not here to really talk about the parking or that measure. I'm here to talk about, a little bit about, I gave you some, uh, drawings. I've been working again with Mayor Hart and, uh, Sean from the Waterloo Center for the Arts, um, looking to get a mural put up as part of Veterans Way. Um, and if you can, I just, these are pretty generic drawings. I just put those together this afternoon, just so you again have some insight of what's potentially can happen down the road. And part of it would be, you know, this mural and what Sean has told, and I think Jessica is part of that committee, and I'm done. Craig, you want to lend me some?
No, 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 Craig, come up if you want to speak. Um, but I have had conversations with, uh, Mr. Miller, um, and Sean, and I think we left off with regards to the mural, um, seeing if there's a designer, what kind of concept we're going to use, and then work together to come up with some resources to do it. I have had a conversations with, um, with, uh, Greg, uh, our building, building inspector had had conversations with him about the process and about, uh, where to go from there, so have done that. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Creighton Smith has been a great advocate in her short time, uh, working with you, the issues and conversations that you're telling me about. Uh, we've been looking at that. One request was to have, uh, Mohammed come to the meeting, uh, as you wanted, so we can make sure that we're hearing you, uh, and I believe he was there as well.
Correct.
Um, so, uh, I would hope by, uh, next spring, um, the council would support doing some creative things to help you deal with your parking issues. I can't say today if that door will be open, I don't know. We need to work together to come up with some solutions. But Mohammed was there, and Councilwoman Creighton Smith has been an incredible liaison, um, for, uh, Vets Hall, and I'm hoping, uh, we can come up with some solutions to, to move things forward for you.
Oh, no, I, I definitely appreciate it. I, I want to thank you guys, all the city fathers, employees, and the volunteers and the community that has, has made our city a veterans-friendly community. And I think you stated that. I was at the, um, week ago Thursday, or whenever it was, when you did the, the state of the city, uh, uh, announcement and the dedication for the, uh, Southern Brothers Plaza over there. So, that was, again, a great asset to this community. The bridge has been awesome, the lights up. When we had our Vietnam Memorial Vigil about a month and a half ago or so, led up to the lights over there for the, the campaign ribbon for Vietnam, it was really awesome. So, all those assets really adds to what we're doing, and we're just looking to hopefully add to that component of making this.
Yeah.
Along with Veterans Way. We're, we're right, sitting right there on the cusp of it. You know, Memorial Hall being built in 1915, and I don't know how much more time.
Yeah, you, you don't have any more time. But, uh,
Because I could give a whole history lesson of what, what's happened.
But I would, but I would encourage you, um, for the council members.
No, I know you've been working there, and I want to thank everybody.
For the council members that have not had a tour, I would reach out, uh, maybe, uh, next week. Uh, you can reach out and we'll see if we can get other council members there. But, you know, Veterans Way is a really great project and a really great acknowledgement, but, you know, there's more to do. Uh, and so, we're not done, we're just beginning. And when I tell you guys that we hear you, um, uh, we are working towards to try to come up with some resolution. Like I said, the councilwoman lets us know, uh, things that are taking place. And we've been trying to make sure that at the meetings, I think maybe about a year or so ago, uh, we would make sure we have an active liaison there, but at the same time, uh, if there is a staff member that you wanted to talk to or have there, we've been trying to do our best, even with schedules, to make sure you have someone there. But now, you want some action, and so, uh, we're going to work and continue to make things happen. So, your time is up, sir.
That means I got to sit? Thank you.
Mary Potter, 1416 West Fourth, I'm a trustee at Grouse Museum. I'm very happy to follow them because, as you know, the Grouse Museum has a marvelous veterans place. Uh, the big plane that you see, a lot of people are attracted to the Grouse because of this museum. And so, we need to keep it alive. And one of the things that has come to us is there has been a House File 718 proposed by the legislators. In fact, one of our, um, congressmen said that this was kind of railroaded through at the last minute. The idea behind it was that when cities are given this money, they do not do a good job putting it out. And we know that in Waterloo, that is not true. So, what we're asking right now is that this, because this was actually, this was actually a voted-upon levy, that the citizens of Waterloo voted to have this levy for the museum and the library, that at this point, it should not really even be happening, but it has been. So, I have given you all whatever you need to write, you can change it in any way, but there's a few talking points there, that if you can write your legislature or email them, and I think I've put the emails on the back of your place, and I know Dave Eckhart is with the library, and we both feel that these are too good of institutions to lose. And when you lose something like this, you are giving up things. You're giving up things in your community that draw other people here. We're the only museum that has a plane flying, the only one that has a veterans. So, we are desperately in need of you talking to your legislators, asking them to get rid of this bill, rewrite it, put something in it that will not affect this. By the way, any of you that do not yet have a membership to the Grouse need to get on that, okay? Thank you.
Mary, question, question for you. Uh, Mary, question. So, you know, I think, um, you know, fortunately, but unfortunately, you know, uh, but fortunately, um, our local legislators, of course, are in support of keeping that levy separate, right? Um, the question I have is you have, you know, a row of gentlemen here, you have yourself here, you have veterans all across the entire, uh, state. Um, has there been any advocacy on bringing people together? Because we're at the, they don't listen to us, you know, sometimes.
Were you at our meeting at the Grouse?
I was, and I probably, and I probably said it.
Yeah, you kind of snuck in and snuck out, I think.
But, but while, while they're here.
Right.
Um, but I'm gonna tell you, that, that speaks volumes to those that don't believe.
That's why everybody needs to send for this. It really needs to be done, and they need to. They need to know the impact this is going to have on even our, uh, economics. You know, you don't bring people here, they don't use motels, they don't use restaurants. It, it hurts everybody. The impact will be really bad. The museum has already started to do layoffs and terminations and all kinds, you talk part of my time.
Uh, no, but you were done. Um, so, Ms. Mary, I'm sorry, we're gonna move forward. We have a couple, um, uh, folks that need to, um, leave soon as we're done. But no, thank you for your advocacy. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council and mayor?
Jessica Rucker, Main Street, Waterloo. Um, now that Veterans Day has passed, the banners have come down off the light poles, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew, um, if you purchased one of those banners, they are at the Main Street Waterloo office and can be picked up during our office hours. Um, I know there was a little confusion when that was going to happen and where there, I officially have possession of them and they can be picked up.
All right. And, uh, those that want to put up banners, you go to www dot.
I don't remember the website.
We'll, um, we'll work with, uh, Tara and get a, um, something put up for people to know that. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on non-agenda-related items?
Reverend Larry Stummey, 1008 Lois Lane, Waterloo. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Reverend Dr. Creighton Smith for the privilege of allowing Dr. Blackwell and myself to work with her and our U and I students as we gather together, developing a survey for the residents and former residents of the north side of Waterloo. This survey, we trust, will give notice, voice, to those directly affected by the abandoned and deteriorating structures around which they live or have lived. Thank you again, good Reverend Doctor. I also want to thank Councilman Professor John Childs for communicating with Dr. Blackwell and myself to give us updates on the City of Waterloo's response to particular abandoned structures, and informing us and inviting us to the upcoming Waterloo and Cedar Falls Beginning Community Development Plans and Fair Housing Study, which will be held later this month. Thanks again to Professor Childs. In closing today, I would like to register my disappointment of the city's handling of the court-ordered demolition of the house at 526 Logan Avenue. Judge Andrea Dreyer described this house as unfit for human occupancy and dangerous. According to court records, this property was purchased by then-Waterloo City Councilman Scott Jordan in 2004 on a sheriff's sale. In 2016, the house was damaged by fire, making it uninhabitable. The city finally took Mr. Jordan to court in 2023, seven years later. Judge Dreyer ruled that this building constituted a public nuisance and gave the owner until October 31st, 2023 to remove it. When I saw the property had not been demolished by October 31st, 2023, I contacted Councilman Childs to find out why. He checked and discovered that the city had granted Jordan a delay to destroy the property. The city's pattern of, of delayed negligent, negligence of deteriorating and dangerous property on the north side of Waterloo has been repeated too often. Records indicate that 70% of the black residents in Waterloo are owned by non-black absentee owners. Thank you, and I, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
Michael Blackwell. And I live in Cedar Falls. I am thankful for each day, more than ever, since being on my deathbed in January 2021, when doctors at the University of Iowa Hospital gave me less than a 10% chance of survival. I am thankful that two and a half years later, I am well enough to teach, write, preach, and resume, uh, an advocacy for the poor, oppressed, and dispossessed. I am thankful for my long-term memory concerning the murders of John F. Kennedy, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King Jr., and Bobby Kennedy, and how governmental agencies were fraudulent in their investigations and what they knew. From eight to 12 years old, my burgeoning social awareness matured and concretized. I am thankful for my education at well, as, at Wesleyan, Morehouse, Yale, Boston, and Harvard Universities, and the many renowned folks I was privileged to meet and claim as associates and/or friends. I am thankful for the inaugural Fall Summit of the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission last Friday, to hear about, uh, efforts to name and seek to promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in the Cedar Valley. I'm thankful that, uh, students protect, protested against the expected Board of Regents intention to terminate DEI programs, uh, rename them, uh, and, uh, reassign a professional staff and, uh, fire others. I hope more protests occur, not only at Regents universities, but also in communities across the state. I am thankful for the possibilities of the future. When more ethically conscious people and organizations, uh, businesses, and elected officials will come together to dissent and to exercise their constitutional rights to pro- and to exercise their constitutional rights to protest for right. On some positions, cowardice asks the question, is it safe? Expediency asks the question, is it politic? Vanity asks the question, is it popular? But conscience asks the question, is it right? And there comes a time when we must take positions that are neither safe nor politic nor popular, but we must take those positions because conscience tells us it is right. I am thankful.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Really quick. I will be having a constituent forum next Monday, November twenty-seventh at six P M. We will be at the Waterloo Public Library. Due to renovations that are happening, we will be on the second floor in the conference room, but I hope to see all of you next week.
All right, is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the approval of one A one bills payment for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of one million, four hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred three dollars and sixty-two cents, and for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in an amount of four million, one hundred eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sorry. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number one, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the issuance of not to exceed one million, fourteen thousand dollars in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I would like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed one million, fourteen thousand dollars of sewer revenue capital loan notes. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the Waterloo Center of the Arts Chiller Replacement Project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a chiller replacement? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specification, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
I apologize, I have to pull up the bids real quick. Okay, our engineer's estimate was three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Reliable One Heating, AC Plumbing of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred dollars. Second bidder was Young Plumbing and Heating Company of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Our next bidder was Plum Tech Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. And our final bidder was Falker Mechanical Contractors LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a word of bid to Plum Tech Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, approving the contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the Waterloo Center for the Arts Chiller Replacement Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five residential slash miscellaneous area snow removal contract for city-owned lots generally acquired through Iowa Code six fifty-seven A.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to snow removal contracts for city-owned lots? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
And motion, that motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, please read a bid.
A bid, okay. Our estimate was twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents per lot, per occurrence. We received one bid from B and B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was nineteen dollars and forty cents per lot area, per occurrence.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to B and B Lawn Care Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of nineteen dollars and forty cents per lot, per occurrence, approving the contract and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five residential slash miscellaneous area snow removal contract for city-owned lots generally acquired through Iowa Code six fifty-seven A, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's for a request by Schatz Trucking LLC to rezone approximately two point nine three acres from A dash one agricultural district to C dash one, C dash Z, conditional zoning district to allow for a trucking business at four thirty-eight West Airline Highway. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to conditional zoning district and Schatz Trucking? Or anyone going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Schatz Trucking LLC for a rezone of approximately two point nine three acres from A dash one agricultural district to C dash one, C dash Z, conditional zoning district to allow for a trucking business at four thirty-eight West Airline Highway. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Kelly, I'm looking through these, and I know we thought five through thirteen, but should we do like five and six since they're directly slum and blight? Or is it okay to do and open up all of them?
I think we can open all of them, and then we just need to go through and approve the resolutions under each one.
So when he reads it, a motion to receive approval of public hearing?
And then read all the titles.
For the downtown waterfront development, refrosted big projects, and then just go through it that way.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for an amendment to the Downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan for the East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, for the Martin Road Development Plan, the Northeast Industrial Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, the Rath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, the Sand Marne Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, the Schreuts Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, the University Avenue Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, and the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. If anyone has questions from five through thirteen, we've opened them all up together, so please come to the podium if you have questions about these items, and they're open on all of them.
Thank you, Mayor. Forrest Diliboo, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I have a concern with all of these from five to thirteen. What that is doing is changing from redevelopment land to urban renewal, which to me, as a taxpayer, means we will not get any of that increased taxing into the general fund. It means we'll all go into the TIF forever because these are non-ending TIFs. Urban renewal does not end. Redevelopment does end. It has a sunset clause. We in this town need relief. We need tax relief. We need money. You folks know that probably better than I do. But we can't continue to take it all from the taxpayers. We gotta use some of this redevelopment money and get it back into the general fund as soon as we can. If we don't, we will never survive. I, I urge you not to do this, not to put them in the urban renewal TIF, but to keep them in the redevelopment. I beg you to please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has questions about these items?
Wayne Nathan, five four eight Cloverdale. I really don't have a lot of comment. I just wanted to let you know I support with, with Forrest what he says. He, he's very knowledgeable on what, when he comes up here. He's done his homework, and I wanted to let you know I support him and what he says about the urban renewal stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second to close public hearing and receive and file comments for numbers five through thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an area of slum and blight for number five and six, and for all of them, an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project, and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. I think number nine is well, slum and blight.
Oh, sorry. Yep, number nine.
All right, counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Could, could Mr. Anderson just address what Mr. Delarue said, so we have some clarification?
What's happening now?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So all of the plans are underneath the urban renewal portion of the state code, so we're not changing the designations to any of them from what they were before. The, the ones that you noted as slum and blight do not have a specific end time, but the rest of them are on the twenty-year schedules as they were before, so we're not changing that designation at all.
And one more question?
Yes, sir.
And would it be possible next year at this time to maybe have, like, when you have your economic development meetings with, with specific council members, that we could have some time to sit down with you and go over this prior to all of this at one meeting?
Definitely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote on five through thirteen. If there's any difference, let us know if you plan to choose your support.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number fourteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and request by the City of Waterloo to rezone approximately point seven four acres from A one agricultural district to M two P planned industrial district located at thirteen eighteen Martin Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendations of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving the request by the city of Waterloo to rezone approximately 0.74 acres from A-1 Agricultural District to M-2P Planned Industrial District located at 1318 Martin Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Glad you found it.
I almost read it in the last.
Uh, Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take one through three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a three-year software contract with Polco in the amount of $40,000 for the purpose of community engagement and for budget simulation, CIP prioritization, and taxpayer receipt, and authorizing the finance director to execute said document. Number two, a resolution approving an amendment, number one, to the professional services agreement with Envision Architecture LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed on June 20th, 2022, in the amount of $78,000 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Burns Aquatic Center project agreement, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number three, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with construction-related services for fiscal year 2024 Burns Aquatic Center project, contract number 177, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
Again, thank you so much. Is there anyone with questions on these three items? Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
All right. Paul, Paul can stop sweating now. Well, I think we've been sweating for a couple of years. All right. Could someone take four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First, a resolution approving supplemental agreement number five to a professional service agreement originally executed November 7th, 2016, with AECom Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $145,000 in conjunction with the FY 2020 University Avenue Reconstruction Phase III Project, Midway Avenue to US 63, contract number 971, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $63,900 in conjunction with the FY 2024 CIPP Sanitary Sewer Improvement Projects, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And six is a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with the Martin Flats LLC for the rehabilitation of 319 East Fourth Street into commercial and residential space, including a grant of $199,000 plus rebates for 15 years at 70%, with a minimum assessed value of $993,060 upon completion, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
I, I want to thank Mr. Anderson for getting back to me with all my questions on number six. And I think it's important to realize that the, it's not the full $993,000.
Right.
It's above the original assessed value of the tax rebates.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take seven through? Congratulations to Mrs. Newman as well. She's in the audience today, so congrats. Could someone take seven through 16?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to, you said through 16?
Yeah, take all of the.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First one is a resolution approving approving electronic submission of the tax increment finance reports to the state of Iowa for fiscal year 2023. Next is a resolution approving certification to the Black Hawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year 2023 East Unified Waterloo Tax Increment District, and place the certification on file.
You can, once you do that, then you can just read off the next Schultz Waterloo Increment Tax, and then read off the rest of them.
Very good. Thank you. And the fiscal year 2023 Shoitz Waterloo Tax Increment Finance District, and the fiscal year 2023 University Avenue Waterloo Tax Increment District, and the 2023 Crossroads Waterloo Tax Increment Finance District, and the fiscal year 2023 Waterloo Downtown Waterloo Tax Increment District, and the 2023 Northeast Industrial Park Waterloo Tax Increment District, and then the Martin, the 2023 Martin Road Waterloo Tax Increment District, and the 2023 Sandmarnen Waterloo Tax Increment District, and finally, the 2023 Rath Waterloo Tax Increment District, and place the certifications on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. You didn't know what you were getting into, did you? He got tired. Hey!